Call this meeting to order. Please stand for the invocation by Councilmember Canelli.
Please join me in the Lord's Prayer. Our Father who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any public comments?
Yes.
All speakers should have signed up advance with the city clerk. Each speaker will please use the podium over there at the end of the room. Please state your name and address before beginning your statement. Each speaker will be limited to five minutes. Please address your comments to the chair. Council will not engage in any debate with the speaker. On the first bell, it means you have thirty seconds left. On the second bell, your time is up and I'm going to have to stop you. If you're uncomfortable or want to speak a little louder, you can remove your mask while you're up there. Just remember to put it back on when you leave so that we can hear what you have to say. Go ahead.
Sammy Salvo.
Sure, everybody, I'm Sammy Salvo. I live across the street on Main Street. And so I have a couple things to talk about. First off, I'd like to say thank you for listening to me a month ago and adding four more citizens onto the police advisory group. I appreciate that. And all of the people they represent appreciate being represented as well. And so I'm here to talk about the apparent closed-door discussion regarding the hiring of our next city manager that is due to the sensitive nature of personnel matters, according to the media. Whether that is the actual reason or not, who knows? So I want first, before I get into this, bring us back to August 2019, when our current assistant city manager was appointed to the position by all of you while her husband was on city council, regardless of whether her husband abstained from that vote or not. That is called nepotism. Now I want to fast forward to April 2020, when the city manager resigns and she is appointed to interim city manager. And now I want to fast forward to September 2020, about five months later. And this is the first time that we've heard many of you about NOVAC, the company that did the city manager search, which you get a free search through after the city manager left within two years, which he did. And they said, or they told you, that they could not start until the end of September, which is coming up. So hopefully they do start that search and you go down that road, rather than just appointing somebody that was appointed while her husband was in a position of power. I just don't think that that is really a way that city government should be functioning, and that is not a good way to represent the people of Batavia or the people anywhere, really. I would also like to talk briefly about the deer management committee and show how that is supporting my defense of holding a full city manager search and not just appointing somebody to that position. So there were at least twenty changes between the original proposal and the proposal that you all are voting on tonight, at least five of which are entirely new from the original deer proposal. I don't know if you all read it or not, but I have a couple of notes, many of my notes afterwards. And at least five of those proposals are brand-new and were not at all in the original proposal. At least ten of them changed committee to the city police department and the city manager, putting them in charge of everything and taking away the power from people who are citizens and experienced hunters. And I am sure that there are many police officers who do hunt and are very capable, but you are taking this away from people who have spent, you know, fifty, sixty years as like their main thing that they do. So something else that I think is very convenient is Area One. So there are five areas in the deer proposal committee. Area One is apparently out because the owner's son does not want people hunting on the property. Area Two is apparently out because Holly's family owns that lot, and they voted a majority rules to not hunt on that lot, except for themselves. Area Three is apparently out because people that own it were on the committee and pulled out and these changes were made, which leaves Area Four and Five, which are the two areas that these changes were put into by the assistant city manager that said that city employees get to hunt on those lots. So the last two remaining lots had this change. It's just a very odd and convenient thing to be happening. And all of this stemmed with the committee breaking up from just miscommunication is what it really seemed to have boiled down to between the city manager, city council, and then this committee. And I think that that is just a demonstration of what could potentially happen if you appoint the person who let that miscommunication happen to the next level of government in our city. I also wanted to speak about the police. They do an amazing job, and they do so much in our community already, between doing background checks, doing random stuff with car seats there, taking care of our drug problems in the city, tons of stuff. And this new proposal puts all responsibility on them. I know the county sheriffs are down at least five people. I don't know how many of the city police are down, but I'm assuming that they're not up to full staff without having people double up in cars. The final thing that I would like to bring up is I have a petition here of about a hundred and fifty signatures. There's eight pieces of paper with about twenty signatures each of citizens who would like a full city search and do not want somebody just appointed to the position by city council. And I do not know who to give these to and who would take petitions. So I'm just, okay, I'll bring them over in a second. So grabbing up, I was just on the say, I hopefully call.
That's it, that's it. Thank you.
John Roke.
I hate the governor and his celly ass masks. I take the opposite view on the hiring of a city manager. I think it's kind of embarrassing that with nine council people, five of you haven't been able to finally say as a majority, let's make a decision. By now, you should have been able to say in executive session, okay, we're going to go with the headhunter group or we're going to hire the current assistant city manager. Obviously, she must be doing a good job. The city's functioning well. And I cannot for the life of me understand why you people still have to go in the meetings to decide, to make a plan, to have a plan. Either hire her or say, no, we don't cut it, we don't want you, and let her start looking at alternatives. It can't be that hard to say, yes, you're our choice, or you're not. But if you're not, then we'll go to the headhunter. I'm not too sure about the appropriateness. The petition is one thing. I was told that a city council member put petitions into some businesses. I don't know if that's appropriate or not. And I'm also a little disappointed that the last time we didn't have a city manager, everybody voted to give the other staff that were pitching in to do extra work, extra money. And they were all met. This time, same thing, we don't have a manager. People need a little extra money, they're doing extra work. And some of you voted no, but they win. Coincidence or not, I'll let you respond. Thank you.
Dave Majewski.
Excuse me, I was here pretty much just to get some clarification on the deer management program. But I don't know if I kind of not, just curious what I saw on the city's website as far as the Area Four that was going to be hunted. And that's perhaps an eighteen-acre parcel. And that's what's showing up on the city's website. What I've been told, it goes from all the property along the waste system there, from track to track. Now I want to know what it's going to be. One of the reasons, my son owns twenty-five acres adjacent to this, and we're concerned about that. He has an area there that's recreational, deer management. He hunts deer. Also concerned about people coming out to his property. They can't find a deer, a dead deer, or whatever. Concerned about coyotes in the area. Even if they go and find their deer, if they're going to gut the deer right there, leave the remains, concerned about coyotes. He has various cameras throughout the property showing a fair amount of coyotes there. Also, with these, if Mr. De Salvo is correct in saying that Areas One, Two, and Three aren't going to allow deer hunting, is this proposal really a city management, a deer management program when it's only going to pertain to areas on the south side and on the south side of Tonawanda Creek? Deer aren't going to swim the creek, so whatever is over there, any deer that are taken care of in that area. I should say that there, I live on Ward Three, and we get plenty of deer there. We get them in our backyard, we get them on our patio. They eat my wife's hosta. We also have squirrels that eat the vegetables in the garden. And we're going to have a squirrel management program too, because they're all over the place, they're kind of running rampant. So I'm looking for clarification on the zones that are there. Also, I'm kind of curious to know why only city employees are going to be allowed to hunt. There are plenty of other good hunters. And also concerned about liability. If someone were to go on my son's property, be injured, he does do trapping, there are some nuisance beaver in the area. And one of the areas right adjacent to the city property is wetlands. Got five beaver out of there this year. Someone walks into, it's a wetland, they walk into a beaver trap. Or else, there's also equipment out there. There's cameras out there, other tree stands or whatever. Worried about safety event as far as there have been people hunting back there. I've been told they were former city employees that used that property. They had been using it. There are currently deer stands out there. And if it's not supposed to be hunted, just curious why those stands are there. And I guess that's pretty much it, you know, concerned. I don't know about answers, if we can get answers as far as the property areas that are going to be covered back there, if it's going to be that eighteen-acre parcel, that triangle, or run across the entire piece, and liability, obviously. You know, just very concerned about someone going on the property, getting hurt or whatever. And even though there's indemnity as far as someone signing a waiver that they won't own, if you have to go to court, you have to go to court. And, you know, you don't have time just because we own property there. And if someone goes on our property, they're trespassing. And if lawsuit comes about, don't have time or money to go to court. And so I guess that's it.
Noah Majewski.
I'm Noah Majewski, I live at eighty-eight hundred Alexander Road, Batavia. I own property that's adjacent to Area Four that's going to be hunted for the city. And like my father previous said, I've ran into numerous people plenty of times trespassing across the line, coming from the city of Batavia property, from the waste management ponds crossing onto my property. I've notified people in the city of Batavia building. Nobody seems to care. They kind of usually end up being friends of people. My other thing is liability. There's a lot of nuisance beaver around. I run nuisance beaver traps. I have a nuisance permit from New York State DEC. A three-thirty trap snaps a beaver's neck. I don't want somebody stepping in that because they're set around the swamp on my property. And it's a nuisance, I have to take care of them. And I don't want the repercussions of somebody trespassing. Heaven forbid that happened to them. I don't want to deal with that. I don't want to deal with people on my property if something else happens, or somebody wants to climb one of my tree stands or steal one of them, or a trail camera, or anything like that. I've dealt with it for the last ten years, and I just feel like this is opening up a whole new can of worms to bring more people into an area that's populated with people, that has people running around that we recreate on and not knowing who's going to be hunting back there or anything like that. It's a big area of concern for me. I have a fiance, she hunts with me. She hunts on the ground, she does not climb trees. And I am also worried about her being on the ground and people not shooting safely around her. And that's, that's all. Thank you very much.
That's all.
Councilor's response?
Did they sign a waiver for them to hunt down their property?
Well, just to kind of clarify some things. I find it suspicious that Mr. De Salvo's father was on the deer committee, suddenly broke news that I'm unaware of, that everybody except the city is now participating, is not participating in this program. So I don't know why that happened. I don't know if the deer committee was still active, not being a committee, and talked to somebody. I don't know, I'm speculative. It's pretty suspicious to me where the son of one of the committee members comes up and starts making detailed responses about landowners that we don't even know about yet because we have to either approve this plan so that we then can approach the landowners and let them know what the final plan is. Before then, we didn't have a plan, so they would ask questions. What would we tell them? Because we had no final plan. So step one is approve a plan, if that's what we decide to do. Step two then is to have that solid plan, now it's law, and then we can go to the landowners and show them exactly what they're getting involved into. As far as Mr. Majewski, I understand your concerns, and we definitely would be in contact with you to prevent anybody, because all these members of the chosen hunters allowed to go on there would actually be policing the city property to make sure there is no trespassers on there. And they would know where the boundaries are and they would not offend your property. I'm also planning to make a revision or making a motion to make a revision to the plan that basically allows for antlerless hunting only, okay? To protect the work that you've done in your management over there so that if one of your management bugs, wanders off the property, we're not concerned about that, it's not a recreational hunt. This is a call to lower the population, to prevent damage and interaction with human beings, tick-borne illnesses, and so on and so forth. So we're not looking to get trophy deer from your hard work. We're trying to solve the problem. And so I understand your concern. And if you look at the deer plan, we can provide you a copy of it. It's pretty explicit about what happens if a deer goes on adjacent property and so on. If we have permission, we contact you and we recover it. If we don't have permission, we have to make sure that doesn't happen. And if it does, we'll let you know about it, and it's your deer. You know, so we'll work that out, that's a logistic thing. And that's yet to be determined, because we don't have a plan yet. So until we have a plan, then we know what we're talking about. Then we can approach people, then we can get all the logistics. So it may not even go off this year anyway just because of timing and other important issues like we're still trying to deal with our economy. We're still trying to get through this COVID epidemic. We have children back in school, are they not in school? We got a budget to balance based on lost revenue. So these are priorities in my mind, and I know in a lot of years. So we're working on the deer committee as a sidetrack. It's not what I would consider one of our main priorities right now. And so that's important to remind, okay? So Rosemary, if that answers any of your questions or help you to know. Anyway, Rosemary, I mean, you asked about the plan.
Yeah, but the sidetrack thing all the way around. Anyway, that's all right. I, I'm thinking about what you said, the fact that he has tracks on his property. He would know where they're located. His girlfriend would know where they're located. Hunters would not know where they're located. The thing that really bothers me is the fact that you might have our police patrolling these areas when they belong out on the streets, taking care of everyone else, okay? That bothers me. I don't think we should vote on this at all tonight because there's too many ifs and buts and dots in my mind, absolutely. And you've got to get people first to see who wants to let them hunt on their property. And the fact is, even though they're not bows and arrows anymore, but the fact with the guns, those damn guns go five hundred feet if they miss a deer, okay? It was proven in Rochester, New York, at the Duran Park, that a lot of times they had missed the deers. Now, kids are going to be walking, people are going to be walking. It's the fall time. I just, I just don't think we should vote on this. We should table this tonight and come back with people that want to do this. And that's it.
Our President, just for clarity, oh, and what's forth before council does not include calling with guns. It's an archery-only program.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
The program being proposed and considered by council is not involving firearms. It's an archery-only program, but proposed by council.
Okay, and it's my understanding there is no police patrolling out there. They're just scheduling and knowing who's allowed to be on there. And if an employee comes across some stranger out there and they can't show that they're authorized to be on the property, then they'll call the police like they would anyway to report a trespass. And that would happen even if they were hunting, when they're not supposed to be there now. So if that was to be the case, I don't know of any case where employees have been hunting on there secretly and went, went, not now and not being allowed, kind of being allowed. That's not been, that's not been the case. It's been longstanding that there's no hunting on city property. And due to liability and whatnot, the only reason that part of the change where city employees would hunt on city property is to protect the liability aspect of all the equipment we have, all our property out there, some of the infrastructure out there. It's just not for, for the first year at least, we were more concerned about making sure that employees know the area just as well as, I mean, they don't know it as well. I don't know it because I'm not an employee that's out there. But Public Works employees are out there doing stuff, storing stuff out there. So they would know if anybody's out there or a car is parked out there. And they would know that person's not supposed to be out there.
Well, there's a lot of decent people that abide by the laws. And then there's some that don't abide by the laws. That's why we have DEC going out during the evening, in the afternoons, and catching these poachers, okay? And you know that yourself, okay? Well, I'm against this.
Well, just so we clarify, because there were some statements made that were really not entirely true. Okay, so I guess I should ask the city manager, have we received notification from anyone else saying they are not participating in the program?
No, in fact, when the committee was still functional, Majewski and Noah, you had actually indicated you would allow hunting on your property, according to what the committee brought back to me, okay? And then Jerry Reinhardt, Stephen Holly, Russell Napew, and Dwayne Preston were interested parties according to the committee. So with that, we went forward. But again, the intention was, until the plan is finalized, we're not going to go forward to landowners because they need to know exactly what they're going to be getting into if they are going to allow hunters on their property. So again, as soon as council passes that, the next step would be for the implementation team to contact landowners. But this was a, and forgive me, I'm sorry your name is on here. And it was given to me by Mr. De Salvo from the committee that you were interested in participating in the program. So these were people, you know, they haven't signed any waivers or contracts with us that were interested in the beginning.
And just so you know, if you read the memo from the city manager, it also stated that implementation this year would be up in the air just based on the school situation and so on. Another reason to bring the police into it. It's very, and the committee members I talked to at the time were constantly reminding me about Ron Decoy and how the police handle it there and how it was a model that they had looked at seriously and some of the things they liked and some they didn't, whatever. So that's kind of where we went when the committee resigned. We, we had some miscommunication, as was stated. We, myself and Mr. Canelli, I contacted him before that meeting. And I, and it's his committee. And I asked him how I could help. And our plan was to go in there and apologize and clarify everything and get everybody on the same page, and then conduct business. Unfortunately, before we had a chance to do that, they walked in and they all quit. So we never had a chance to do that, and we just had to now take on an additional responsibility where we had to modify the plan to try to get it done this year. And it was too late to form a whole other committee and do all that. And the Ron Decoy model was also one of those they looked at. So we kind of went in that direction with a police officer managing the scheduling and the background checking and the vetting and the qualification. What better person to do it, our public safety professionals? They would know if a person's qualified to handle the bow and can be out there safely, and they're a person that's going to obey the law and not trespass and not bring a blemish to the city or to themselves by getting arrested for being on the property without permission. So that was all going to be vetted. And who better to do that than professional law enforcement people who have access to tools to do that? So that's what we're at on it. Not to get off in the weeds, we're still on public comments. We will cover that at the business meeting. We can discuss this a little more. But I just wanted to clarify some of those things in reference to the deer and there is no guns. Even if we paid somebody to do it, which is very expensive and cost prohibitive, it would be done with our terms, which would be a safe manner and any way we wanted it, and the plan covers all that. The committee did a really good work. They did a lot of background, they did a lot of research, and that's to be commended. But near the end, things got a little difficult and a little miscommunication started to occur. And if things, when it really needed it, they all resigned. So we really were left kind of hanging.
I forgot to mention the fact that I'm against the cost of putting extra police for this because, like you mentioned, the salaries, the budget, the financial discrepancies that we might have with next year's budget. So I'm totally against it, all the ways.
Go ahead.
At what point do I get to ask some technical questions about things I see?
Probably when we get to the business meeting and the discussion. That would be probably more appropriate. We're kind of got off in the weeds because of.
I just want to ask, you mentioned it, just to emphasize, the police aren't going to be over there and we're taking them off the streets.
No, not that I know of. We could get, when that part comes, we could ask the chief himself what his plan is and how they plan to manage it. We can get into that detail.
Right. Any other response? Okay, communications?
Brighton Securities submitted their annual application for shred day. It'll be on Wednesday, September twenty-third, from noon to three P.M. at two-twelve East Main Street. They've done this for several years now, and it allows for free disposal and shredding of documents for the public.
Okay, any concerns or questions on that? The next city council conference meeting will be held Monday, September twenty-eighth, seven P.M. City Hall, Council Boardroom, second floor. And I just wanted to bring up one thing, sorry.
Sorry, there was an amended agenda, and it's just got the two other informational-only athletes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I saw that. Okay, go ahead.
That's okay.
Athletes, baseball, various dates.
Yes. They would be utilizing Kibbe softball and Williams baseball fields through October twenty-fifth, various dates, as well as Boys of Summer, using Williams baseball field on September tenth, seventeenth, and October fourth. And these are all for youth, youth league.
Anyone have any questions from there?
Thank you.
One other thing I wanted to bring up. I received an email several weeks ago from Mr. Gundell. And he brought up the five-star bank situation. And he showed pictures of, you know, people waiting in line because they closed one branch and forced everybody to go to the other. Have we addressed, is there still a public safety issue there where cars are backed into the street at River Street? Does anyone tell me if that ever's been revealed? I know it came up briefly and then.
People are now allowing people into the bank, so I haven't seen a problem.
Mr. Gudell was on our committee. And he was with leaders for the sixth ward. And he mentioned that at our last meeting, which was in August, and Rachel called up to the bank. And it was, at that point, they couldn't do anything. But since COVID has, you know, declined, they decided to let them in.
So that relieves some of the pressure of all the driving.
Yes, because the regular people were like down there.
Yes, I mean, there's.
But now that you can go into the bank, there hasn't been any problem.
I mean, I was just going through some of my stuff. I like to relook at things that, you know, maybe I've forgotten. And that was one that I had passed by. And I did remember somebody talking about it. I just want to make sure that it is resolved to some degree and that it's not open ended and we never responded back. So that's been taken.
There is a problem though with the kind of time with the dumping buildings driving in there. And there's cars that pull it like one foot and there's a process going ahead of me. Or they've actually, I've seen a pack of three or four cars on the mains, which I'm happy that they're doing great business. They may want to rethink the way you want to make it longer and do something.
That was a contention back when they were going to build it and they were working on the zoning. So I guess they didn't predict the additional vehicle traffic with people not being able to physically go inside. So that now moved all that into vehicles and one or two people per car is odd people in line. And there's one like ten people in line. And there's a lot of cars there, it takes a lot of space. Just, maybe hopefully that'll vent itself. If we can keep it on.
vent itself, but we can keep an eye on that as well. If that needs to be addressed, we should not have an accident on West Main Street during a busy time, it'd be a real bad, bad idea. Okay. Police Traffic Services Grant.
Thank you, Council President, members of council. Tonight, we have before you a New York State Governor's Traffic Safety Grant, in the amount of just over $9,000 for Police Traffic Services. This money goes towards overtime details to ensure, enhance our traffic safety operations. So we're asking for an amendment to the budget to accept that award, specifically seatbelt mobilization enforcement for $1,440, and then PTS enforcement or Police Traffic Safety enforcement of $7,584.
Any questions? Sean, how long does it take you to get the grant once it's approved?
As soon as you guys put this in our budget, we have it. It starts October 1st.
You all have the money?
The money is reimbursable. So as soon as we, so we have to obviously voucher for what we pay.
What's the turnaround, and how do you bill monthly?
It is billed quarterly. And I'll be honest with you, I don't know what the turnaround is, but it's not a long time.
Any other questions? So are we in favor of moving that to ten nights of business meeting?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Take this into executive session.
Whereas Article 7, Section 105.1 F of the public policy law permits a legislative body of municipality to enter into executive session to discuss the medical, financial, private, or private industry of a particular person or corporation, or matters leading to the appointment, confinement, probation, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation. Now therefore, it is resolved by the council of the city who takes it. And upon approval of this motion, the city council is hereby entered into executive session.
Mr. Cannelli, call the room.
Council member, Vino?
Yes.
Cannelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Karaz?
Yes.
Baikowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Okay, we're now in executive session. If everyone else could please leave the room. Dawn, if you would just stay briefly to get us started.
I call the business meeting to order. You've all seen a copy of the June 2020 financials before we approve them. Rachel, do you want to explain about the software and stuff I haven't known from itself, let me kind of tip in why we're behind with those?
Well, we're actually not behind. I got the council report scheduled. And in June, July, I guess, September, you always approve June, and it's spaced out because of the single meetings in the summer. In October, you will approve the August report. In November, you approve September. And you'll also get the August report at the next September meeting too. I'm sorry about that. So because we have the single meeting, we only have one financial report.
So it'll be quite simple.
Yeah, but you're going to have, you're going to have, as a conference meeting in September, you're going to have the July and August financials, and then you will approve them in October.
The next one, first meeting in October.
Yes.
Now, you mentioned something about a new format coming out, you're going to give us a net example.
Yeah, so with the conversion of the software, you find, right now, this financials doesn't come on a software, it's actually hand keyed into an Excel sheet every single meeting, tied back to the Excel. So we're going to see if our new software can give us a format with a push button, where you get it directly out of the system, or if we're going to continue to give you it in this format. So it'd be great if we could just print the report, and it could come right out of the manager's office, and Lisa Neary, even if she wasn't here, I could send her a report to you at any time.
So we had a question, and it was between the financials, we could run a quick report. Right now, what she's basically doing is, she has an Excel sheet with all these columns in it, and she's just modifying the ones that changed this month, which is a lot of money. I would hope our software would...
Well, and we'll see what we get, because the expense report there will be easy. Revenue was broken down like this by the former manager, Bolino, so you could see more of the revenue line in our new software. I don't know if I can get this much detail out of the revenue line. So it might be a trial and error with some financials, what you guys like, what you don't like. And in the end, if we have to go back to this, that's fine as well. So...
Good, I'm glad you explained it, because I have the one from May, and I've got the one from June, and I've got the one from June again in our packet. And I'm just questioning, how much has it changed for, right now, for July and August? What is the figures? Do you have any figures from 1920?
For July? No, I have just the report you have here in June as well. And if you want specifics, I could certainly look into it, like specific expenses or specific revenues.
Revenues, I wanted to know, because I know that taxes are really down, everything, you know?
We've done really well on real property taxes, and I know we gave a financial update at the last meeting. I didn't bring the report with me. But we've done really well on collection of real property taxes. We still are seeing about 15% decrease on sales taxes. But my plan was to give you guys another quarterly update in two or three months, okay, on where we are in this budget. We're still frozen different spending items in the departments that we all pledged to do back in April and May. I still am going with the same number of projected revenue loss of about 1.8 million, and looking for different ways to make that up. We've come pretty close, and if we can continue to hold the line, I think we can come in flat for the year now. So again, we, we're watching every penny in what we're doing. But, you know, and then sales tax could kind of come back to normal levels by the end of the year, and it looks much better. So...
Did you say it was about 15% down?
That's right. So originally, when COVID hit, we went and estimated a 30% drop, and then we, I recalibrated that to a 15% loss.
Considering, all that's considered is not that bad, with Darren Lake not opening our tourist trade.
Right. And that's, that's my estimate, that's not the actual. I think the actual county's second quarter, our first quarter, was 23.6% down. I have to go back and look, I don't have it.
And then still within the hype before a lot of things were open. So this next quarter will really give us an idea of where we're going to slow, we're going to slow through or not, you know, so.
So I don't think we're in a bad position. I think the departments and the department heads have done really, really well at holding the line on spending, not participating in some of the programs. You know, we haven't done pavilion rentals this year, we just didn't want the overtime staff there. So I think they've done a really, really good job. We're a full staff of the police department. Sean and I were looking at their numbers, and their overtime isn't as high as normal it would be this time of year. And again, when we look at the deer management plan, we certainly can add a detail in the overtime with the numbers we have today and be able to afford that, because it's not that expensive.
We still have all of the B L T. We have the B L T.
Not all of it, what he released, which was like two-thirds.
80% of the B L T, I should say, that we did not budget for. The A M A, we got our first payment before COVID hit. So we got a 1.2 or 1.5 million dollar payment. We're going to see if our second payment, which comes towards the end of this month, which is the other 20% of that A M A, whether we get 80% of that or not, because they, we got the first payment released prior to COVID.
And just, just to piggybacking, Sean, correct me if I'm wrong, when they're at full staff, the overtime should go down, because you have enough bodies where you're not backfilling, because there's people there. So it's always, I believe, it's a good contention, a good idea to have us at full staff as long as, for as long as we possibly can, because it saves the overtime, and it gives, and it takes the stress off the people working double, triple shifts all week. Okay, so, just a thought. So are we in all consensus to approve the...
I don't know.
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry. This probably, Matt can probably answer the best, but Matt,
I'm looking at the difference between the water fund and the sewer fund. First, I'm a little confused, why in the sewer fund, I presume this discharge is called consumption?
Yeah, it's the billable amount, if you will. So, you know, in our billing system, it's called consumption, but yeah, it's what we receive.
Okay, well, here's what I find confusing. Now, in April, the water, it was 61,000, 61,265, and the sewer was 94,681. May, 18,931, but sewer, 83,262. Why will the discharge be higher than the water?
Primarily that is attributed to a wacko milk.
Okay.
A wacko discharge is way more than they consume.
It's used in the well water, not...
Using well, some of it's what they call cow water, which is condensate water, things like that, that creates a discharge.
So it's a major amount. How's that reflect the cost, or how are we doing on the cost of treating?
Yeah, that, if they get into excessive strength, there's surcharges that go, go to that, and that's across any industry.
Right.
There are certain levels. If it gets above a certain level, it costs more to treat it, so there's a surcharge that goes in to do that. Some of that may also reflect the town that's taking sewer being coming into the city. I would have to look specifically, but I'm pretty certain you get town flow in there as well.
And do they have the same piece of...
Yes.
So they would pay?
Yep. Their sewer, well, they're a partner with us, so their sewer organs and your organs is the same. So if they have an industry that's being, that is over, they are surcharging as well. So not the town specifically, but the industry itself.
Thank you.
Yep.
So we're all in consensus to approve the June 2020 financials?
Yes.
Okay. You've seen the August 2020 minutes? Are there any omissions you're currently looking for? So we're in consensus to approve those? Agenda. Item 62, 2020, the deer management plan.
I was reading something I wasn't paying attention to.
That's okay.
Nobody else.
I'm used to it. 63, 2020, the fire department budget for the FEMA assistance grant. 64, 2020, the resolution to amend the fire department budget for the global investigation equipment grant. 65, 2020, a resolution to amend the 2021 fire budget for the bicycle pedestrian and pedestrian safety grant. 66, 2020, the fire department car seat grant. 67, 2020, the vacuum truck purchase for DPW. And the one we moved earlier today, the police traffic services grant, 68, 2020. City attorneys report?
Yes, nothing specific to report at this time of the council. We are continuing to work on the variety of managers across the municipal spectrum, but...
Any questions for the city attorney? City managers report?
Yeah, just a few things I wanted to cover. The mall roof project is complete. There was some extra extensive decking, so you'll see some changing orders coming forward from Matt Worth at the next meeting. But good news that the mall roof project is now complete. Second, I've been following minor leagues baseball, trying to get an understanding of where they sit with the major leagues. And right now, the professional baseball agreement is set to expire September 30th between the N L B and the minor league. Predictions and new sources say that there will be an agreement. It may not be done by September 30th. It should be done this fall, and I think that'll give us a much better idea of what will happen with our stadium and with our team, the Muck Dogs. It is, you know, unfortunate, they're still talking about cutting those minor league teams at this time. And just for everyone's information, the term of the lease agreement between Batavia, City Batavia, Batavia Recreation Corp. and the Penn League extends till April 1st, 2022. We have had several different interested parties approach myself to talk about the stadium, and we can make no commitments until we know the future of our Muck Dogs team. So I want to let you know about that. The ice rink is expected to open in early October, around October 5th. For Gaha, they'll be starting a practice and scrimmage under COVID guidelines. So we're excited to see, you know, more sports being played here in our community. The mandated police advisory collaboration stakeholder group has been convened and will meet next week. We know that the group will definitely learn more about our police practices and our procedures, and we hope that it fosters better community relationships between the members of the group and the police force. Also, so everyone's aware, new legislation was passed last week that requires municipalities to develop a pandemic operations plan to be added to your SEP or comprehensive management plan. The plan must be finalized by April 2021 and presented to the union representation prior to final implementation. So myself and the department heads will be working on that to make sure we are in compliance with that portion of the plan, so it's an operational function. The ERP software project continues. The financial management side of the project is 85% complete and live for all users. The H R payroll software portion is about 50% complete with a go-live of January 2021. The tax collection software build and testing, you approved the contract at the last meeting, is just getting underway, and Heidi will be starting demos on that, and working with the company will be using Systems East. The utility billing and EnerGov, the permitting software, will begin the bill of that software in January 30th of 2021. At the next council meeting, you will see a contract through Tyler for the EnerGov software. You saw it before about a year ago in August, but it wasn't part of what you approved initially. It was an add-on that we got through the process, we were bringing back to you. Just checked on the leak pickup starts in about mid-October. So if your residents and constituents would like to know, it gets started about mid-October. I hope everybody can attend the city center feasibility open house September 22nd at 6:00 P M. in the concourse. Be going over the work that Lovella Engineering has been done for us, the feasibility that will inform how we move forward with a million-dollar D R I for City Center. So there will be drawing, renderings, and conversations in the concourse September 22nd at 6:00 P M. Just a few minor economic development updates. The Theater 56 demolition of that space here in City Center is 90% complete, and 85% of the design work is complete. There was an article just the other day kind of talking about the scope of the project, so they are moving forward. 99 Main Street will be doing a groundbreaking September 22nd at 11:00 A M. If anyone is invited to. The Elec Place project is currently under construction, and that is another D R I project. And lastly, 242 Main Street, which the council did approve a revolving loan fund grant for, this is the Valley Project on Elec Street, is under construction as well.
Where are we just at right now?
Sure. As far as I know, they have moved forward and pulled their building permits from the city. It looks like they are moving forward with their project. So I think we're still waiting on the company and housing committee renewal to do an announcement.
Anything else?
Are all the buckets in the mall alone?
Pretty much. There's yes or no question.
That's right.
It was a yes or no question.
So what do you mean by pretty much?
I think there is one spot that the roof is going to come back. There is, I think, one bucket, new spot that they have. If it rains and it only drips, if it's a real stream heavy wind, and the contractor's coming back to find it and repair it. But essentially, they're done.
Less than two buckets remain.
And that one is targeted for removal, so.
Yeah, and, I mean, we, I mean, I don't know, maybe the type of the feasibility study announcement, maybe we should portray that or make that well-known, that we don't expect to see any more buckets for quite a while, the roof should be repaired, or else we're getting these people back here every day until that happens, right? So the word check it up, tell your constituents, the mall roof is, it's no longer called Bucket City this month. Took a while to get it done, but we did. Committee reports?
Right here.
I don't see any, so... I don't see any, so.
I have one to keep on, don't stop.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, bid is very busy. First of all, the scarecrows are going up downtown, which is always what they all pressure to pay to make scarecrows for a contest. Secondly, they're coming up with another kind of a contest called Downtown Bingo, just sort of like a search where you go in and take a picture or something in a store, you take you into the store, take that picture, it's a bingo game, so we're hoping to get some traffic downtown. They're working on how you get Christmas in the city in the middle of the COVID pandemic. The other thing is, there are two car changing stations going in, one in McDonald's property and one in McCusso's property.
Target, you mean like electric cars?
Yes, electric cars.
So they'll give us free Dunkin' Donuts?
Yes, Dunkin', so we're, we're moving up in the homes, which is wonderful. And the last thing is one by which Rachel knows what I know, so I'm going to give that to Rachel.
Yeah, thanks, Patty, and I want to keep going with my report. There's obviously a lot going on here in our city, a lot of good positive things, but the bid has sponsored with help from Spectrum Charter Communication, the Wi-Fi project, and I hope I got that right. They'll be putting no's on various buildings, and there will be free Wi-Fi access for persons in our downtown, so that is a project I hope to have done by the winter.
Great. So I see Andrew now, so you must have been right.
Spectrum.
Anything else, any other committees? Okay, unfinished business. Chief, did you bring those goggles in?
I did.
Remember when we approved the marijuana, the safe driving marijuana initiative? I asked about it, and I said, you know, we haven't heard anything, so we brought the goggles in, we could maybe try them on for a minute, you know, do something fun. So pass them around, and we have to wipe them off.
So this is our, our marijuana, our road demonstration object, these have kind of mimic the impairment of marijuana in, in the user system. It's a little bit distorted due to the kind of, you know, oversell a little bit, but this pairs with our pedal cars, so there's two pedal cars that are actually pretty large. They set up a course, and then put on students and our participants, and you try to navigate the course.
So sometime in the winter, we'll do something down in here at the concourse, and, you know, maybe we'll do it before council meeting, we could try it out, come a half hour early, and council members can see, I mean, we approved the grant for this and.
Brought back a lot of towels.
I was thinking the same thing.
I'm so glad we're able to see what it's supposed to look like.
Awesome.
Oh my gosh.
Yeah.
I don't know how you could drive like that, I was going to throw up there.
Yeah. It's, it's really blurred and like really like weird.
Yeah.
Well, anyway, I just thought, you know, we, we approved these things, and we, you know, we never see the end result, and it's nice, I just thought it'd be nice to bring those in. Bob, do you want to look at it?
I already did it before the meeting.
Oh, cool. Chief, maybe walk the line. All right. All right, who's finishing the crew of warehouses? Mine, that's for sure. Okay, so, well, anyway, that's a good thing, I mean, this will give people awareness, and especially kids and teenagers, and make them aware that there is an impairment, and they're bumping in with traffic cones, but they're not driving like they think they are. Maybe, maybe if it saves a life for two, I think it's be well worth it.
Just saying, I gotta do it, it makes it better.
Okay, maybe this was a bad idea.
I don't know, I wouldn't really relax right now.
I just had this, John, I had to urge to eat a bag of potato chips, you know?
You got the munchies?
I don't know why, I felt like I was hungry also. All right, moving on, resolution, is there any other business? So we have new business we're doing now, unfinished business. Okay, our resolution sixty-two, twenty twenty, Mr. Canelli, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to approve the City of Batavia deer management plan.
Second, you're right. Please, we're against. Discussion.
I have some concerns. One is that this plan's been amended, and we didn't run it through conference meeting, it has attachments and all of that. The other thing, because of the unfortunate situation with the committee and all the rumors flying around, and the police department running it, which is going to infer increased funds, funding, and in fact, what the situation involving schools, this I find the most troubling because of. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
I didn't hear what you said.
Didn't know I was speaking.
So anyway, I'd like to really refer this back to the committee and have it come back in front of a conference meeting, and where we can discuss it to no one, but I think right now, it's with children being at home, some children being in school, some children remote learning, some children, I talked to a parent the other day that had concerns, she's homeschooling her children, and with all this confusion, the speakers tonight, I'd just like to lay this on the table and have it come back at a future time for a good discussion.
So are you making a motion to table it?
Yes, I am.
So we have a second for that?
Right here, we can answer questions.
Okay, well, we can discuss it right now, or we got a motion on the floor to table it. So we have to vote on that. If we vote not to table it, we can continue discussion, we can move on. So who's, is anyone going to second that motion?
I'll second it.
All right. So is there any discussion on the motion to table?
I have just a comment, you know, for many, many years, a lot of different issues come up, and we've had this discussion many, many times, kicking that can down the road, down the road, on the road. We had a committee that unfortunately did resign because of lack of communications, but this committee worked a very long time, eight months, came up with a wonderful plan. A lot of that plan that we had put together as a committee, working with the manager at the time, Dr. Moore, was pretty much the meat and potatoes of the plan, but it still needed to go through the city manager, so the city manager could put the, the management part of it together as far as the city running the program, which Marty didn't have a chance to do. He exited, Rachel came in, and with the city attorney's help, they, they put all that together, okay? We've got the plan, the few revisions that have been made are in the plan now, we've all received that plan ahead of time, we've all read through it. I don't see what else there is to discuss. The only issue that I brought up, and Rachel had brought up, and I think we've addressed it now, is school opening in this hybrid model, and they've addressed it, now that the police department will be taking over control of this plan, they will determine the safety, and they'll monitor the situation right now. They're not sending guys out October first into the woods with bows and arrows. They're going to monitor the situation and, and figure out if, if at any point it is feasible for us to get out there during this hunting season. If the police department feels it's not safe to do so, then obviously, we would make that call to not do it right now, and we can wait until other things happen.
In the meantime, the plan would be approved, and we can just implement it when we decide.
Right, exactly. So the, the way, the, the way the revisions have, have been put into this wonderful plan that the committee put together, it's just putting it in the hands of the police department, and the police department and the city manager will make that determination based on what the rest of this COVID thing is going to start to look like. So I think tipping this can down the road any further is going to help us out at all. I think that we need to, we need to approve the plan tonight, and then we will implement that plan when, when we can do so, when it's safe, and, and it will be in the hands of city management to, to make that determination.
You have another topic?
Actually, I have a very simple thing. I just simply have two things that we need to be correcting, that's all I have to do it. Outside of two glaring grammatical errors on the front page in their release sentences, they keep saying that we're going to do this from eight to two, and Jackson School, or yeah, John Kennedy for one, does not actually get out until two fifteen, two thirty, now we've got kids walking on the street. That's all, that's all I want, is that we can't keep having it, you know, I just don't want a time change to, to my sentence, that's all it was, it was just a question. The, the school things are different, and there are two now sentences on the front, and it will bother anybody but me, and I'll correct it with Rachel.
Yeah, I just, normally, we wouldn't, there's, there's no discussion of motions, maybe they'll lay something on the table, we'd normally vote.
No, I thought even if we're discussing whether we want to table it or not, I don't think we should table it, I think that's. Let's ask our commentary. Can we discuss whether we should table something or not?
Motion, call, call questions, not the table. I think a motion to table is not a good one.
Okay, so we just vote, if we want to discuss it more, then we vote, we vote this down, we vote this table motion down. Okay, so are you, now that you know that, you're still seconding the motion to table it?
No, I'm going to be table.
Okay, you're seconding the motion to table it, okay. So call, call your, if you vote yes, that means you're tableing.
Councilor Wykowski?
Yes.
Jay Kowski?
No.
Pacino?
Oh dear. No.
Canelli?
No.
McGinnis?
No.
Briggs?
No.
Christian?
Yes.
Karat?
No.
Okay, so I can be table. So at this point, I, I agree with, with Mr. Canelli's, that we can approve this, and then implementation is up in the air. And, and as far as the ten changes, or whatever he, Mr. DeSalle, the speaker, said, if you remember, he told you what those changes were, we substituted committee, and we put city manager and police in there. That's not changing the plan, that's changing who's running the plan. Personally, I don't really think it would have worked very well for a volunteer organization to be strapped with that kind of responsibility over three years period of time. I think it would be unfair to that. They did all the footwork, and then it's up to us now to take this plan like we've done with other plans, whether it be feasibility studies or other recommendations, we can move it to our comfort level, and the level of our liability and our concerns, like what the city manager was supposed to do, and she did, and then that made people all upset. So what I have to ask the question is, if you're worried about all these things, the human interactions, vehicle accidents, tick-borne diseases right in your backyard allegedly, deer stopping their feet, scaring you allegedly, and now you're concerned because where the person works who's going to hunt these deer, now that's an issue? If, if I had a problem in my backyard, and my bushes were being eaten, and ticks were attacking me or whatever, I wouldn't care who killed them, as long as they were culled properly, healthfully, or humanely, and, and culled and removed, and the meat went to a good home. Now, we have a chance here, we have a natural resource, we can feed people in troubled times, where hunters can, can put some good use to their skills, and they can feed needy families with, with free meat, they can feed their own families and their own relatives with free meat, that all they have to do is abide by some rules and do it safely, and they can go out there and help us with our problem, and they can feed their families until they're freezing. And, and at all times, this is an important thing to do there. So what also disturbs me is that somehow, the son of a committee member knows that alleged landowners are not part of this anymore, and I don't understand what the committee is doing, or if there is a committee and we don't know about a committee, or why the landowners are talking to former committee members. We can't, we haven't got to that level yet, until we approve this plan, then we can go approach landowners, and whoever else wants to be part of this plan can volunteer their land, or whatever, but until we have a plan, we have nothing to tell them, and let them know what we're, what our plans are, because we have them. That's why I strongly urge that the plan is put the police in charge of safety, the plan is put people, the police in charge of background and vetting, you know, people that aren't felons, and that can't possess bows, and shouldn't be out there hunting, they're going to make sure all that gets taken care of. The cost would be four to five thousand approximately in overtime?
Yeah, so our conservative estimate is, you know, approximately four to five thousand dollars per year, depending on the level of commitment that we have to have an officer devote to this. So we currently do not know what that would be. The next step for us, once the plan is adopted, would be for me to reach out to the Arondic Point Police Department to determine how they operate their program, and then we would select an officer through our process within the department to do, to run the program. That officer would then be tasked with going out to the landowners of these selected areas to see if they are going to participate or not, get the agreement signed, and then, you know, go through the hunter selection process, the screening process, the, the safety background process, and then through the operational period. So there's a lot of work that we're going to have to take up from this point moving forward, that is going to be a little time-consuming, and unfortunately, yes, we do have to dedicate some overtime hours to making that happen. We are, although we are fully staffed, we are not at a point where we can just take somebody off the road and dedicate them to this.
Right. And, and again, we're not even sure, this is just preliminary, preliminary, and the school system, so we have a plan in place, they can start feeling the waters on what they can do there, and there's a strong possibility we're not even going to be able to meet a timeline. By the time the schools decide if they go back to the full or not, the hunting season part will be over, and they'll be into gun season, and we're not doing this during gun season. So the October first, so I believe November twentieth or something like that is the bow season, and so that would be the only time. After that time, it's the point of no return, and we're not going to be able to formulate enough people.
In, in response to that comment, Gino, too, and this is what I expressed previously, is that if we can't do it for archery hunting season this fall, huh, okay, then what we need to do is we have to wait and see what happens with code, we have to wait and see what the school system does, and if the school system changes their schedule, and we go back to a somewhat normal schedule by, let's say, right after the holiday break, you know, January, then at that point, if you, if you remember the plan that this committee put together, there's phase two that we could implement, and phase two would be, at that point, we apply the D E C for a damage permit, and then we go out and we, we call at that point, because we're allowed to do that, once we get the approval of D E C, even though it's outside of hunting season. We had, as a committee, had just decided that it would be good to, let's try it during hunting season, see how much of an effect we can have during hunting season, we'll analyze that after hunting season, and if we feel like we didn't get enough deer, then we'll kick into phase two and call some more deer. So if we don't get into it into the woods this fall, not a big deal, just wait after January long to see what happens, maybe we can kick in phase two at that, we don't know. So it's, if we have a plan approved and ready to go, then we can certainly determine when we can implement this plan, and it may not be until next fall, we don't know, but at least we have a plan in place. So I think that, that's very important. And also, just to let you know, one of the very, very original discussions that the committee had when we first convened was Sam DeSalle, senior, who was on the committee, went to the Arondic Point Police Department, he got all the information, and he was extremely excited about the Arondic Point plan, because it was extremely successful. We would have to alter it a little bit, because they have much more green space than we do, but it was controlled by the police department, which Sam, senior, seemed to think was a great idea. We did discuss it at the time with our police chief, and we weren't sure if we were actually going to be able to do it or not, because we weren't sure if we'd have to first know. Well, now, in light of everything that has happened, we've sat down with the police chief, and he feels that, yes, we probably could handle this in that manner, so that's why he would be communicating with, with Arondic Point, to see how we can kind of mirror what they've done, which is an extremely successful program, the most successful program that, that the committee had actually researched. Just to let you know a little bit about the background, so we're actually doing a full circle now, and saying, hey, we can actually do this with our police department running it, much safer plan, much more controlled plan. So with these adjustments that Rachel has made, in conjunction with, with the police chief, the plan has actually become even better than it was when the committee presented it. Just what I was.
We spent, we spent the better part of two hours to talk with this, this ad nauseam. Stop the talking and vote. Two hours is long enough.
Okay.
I just think it's pretty pathetic that seven people have the choice of either doing this or not doing it, when there was a hundred and eighty people on the petition, that they did not obviously have enough time to bring the petition around other areas.
What petition?
What petition?
What petition?
The petition that they had for the deer.
That was not for the deer. That was not for the deer. That was for another, there was another petition for another thing, it was, had nothing to do with the deer.
It had nothing to do with the deer.
I noticed that several of the deer committee names were on it.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, my... Well, again, we gotta discuss.
Just by way of background, so council has the information. I did reach out to the Aronacoit Police Department, contact the managers of the program after last council meeting, just to get a few questions answered, to check out the program, which success and issues concern. Uh, the Aronacoit contact was very favorable about the program, indicated that they have not had any issues or problems with it. It worked well, it was effective. So their experience, which has been referenced as an example, and a successful example seems to be borne out by the Police Department contact. Additionally, we shared the plan, obviously, the tweaks to it with D E C. D E C has supported it, said it looks great, ready to move forward with whatever D E C contacts can provide for support. Also, when I spoke with the Aronacoit contact in mid to late August, they weren't exactly sure about the school situation themselves, because of the question of what in session constituted in a virtual environment. They had discussed that, they ran their program for several years. Uh, their determination, per the D E C, who's just recently been in touch with Aronacoit, is that they are gonna proceed with the hunting program this fall, because schools in that setting are gonna be live and in session, even if kids are not in school because of the check-in procedures over there, so, just so council...
They have to check in on screen.
Let's look for it.
Well, we, we...
We've talked a lot enough.
Well, we did, we only talked about it in different contexts, not officially not, so we can just hold on and make sure everybody has their say.
They've had several, two hours of head to head.
Well, it was because of council comments, is what they got into, it wasn't really designed to be at that point. Is there any, I have one motion I would like to make, is that it's antlerless only. Uh, that is the only thing I, I wanna do, because I have had constituents contact me and told me that a lot of this, and this is coming third-hand, so I'll take it for what it's worth. But a, a lot of the debacle, or this whole, who's gonna determine, who's gonna hunt where, we don't want city employees hunting there, had to do with the sighting of a very large deer on one of the properties. Okay, so obviously, somebody has designs on those antlers, and, and that's why I think to take that factor out of this, if that's even possible, I don't even know if it's true or not, this is what I was told, that people aren't aware there's a large deer there. So I would suggest that we make it antlerless only, especially since it's only gonna be a partial season. For every doe you remove from the herd, you're removing possibility of twins that they will give birth that year. Sometimes even triplets on a good year. So you're taking one deer out, you're taking two additional deer, I do it that way. This, this plan says now, you must shoot a doe before you kill a buck. Uh, my thought is, the first deer, because those bucks are unmolested in there, you will have maybe thirty deer killed, and you'll have fifteen doe and fifteen bucks. As soon as somebody shoots a doe, they're gonna go after the buck they've been seeing in there. So just a thought, I move that we make the change to make it doe-only. George, I got, George, I was gonna say, go ahead.
Try not to.
What did I do wrong now?
Just by way of background, in this particular point, we did inquire of D E C about the logistics of that. D E C, the biologist, indicated to Rachel and I that the city as a landowner could restrict that to city-owned property if hunting is permitted on city property. But because those are privileges, buck or doe pursuant to New York State hunting licenses, a private property owner could still allow them to harvest a buck or a doe. So on the private properties, third-party properties, council and the city could encourage does only, but you couldn't mandate or restrict it, because that's a privilege of the New York State hunting license.
Okay, so then I would suggest we, I move that we change it to doe-only on city property.
My only concern, and I'm not a hunter, so I don't know, but my only concern would be, uh, is that will we get the same amount of interest from potential hunters that want to participate in the program if we take that away, you know what I'm saying?
I have, yeah.
Because when they go out hunting, even though they're participating in the city culling, it still is a sport to them, and, and they're gonna be at least using probably some of their own tags as well.
I, I have a question, Mr. President, you have a motion. I, I need a second to discuss. Right, and then, the reason I make the motion is because I have constituents that have expressed their concern to me. So if someone seconds it, we can make the change and discuss it, if no one seconds it, it dies here. Option. Okay, is there any more discussion on that? Okay, so call the vote on that, that, that change. So yes, to make the change for doe-only on city property, no, to leave it as it is.
Counsel, President, antlerless only, right, it could be...
Yeah, antlerless only.
Could be a button mark.
Right, so I, the, the move, motion is antlerless only deer taken on city property.
First deer only?
Antlerless deer only.
First deer only?
No.
Time period?
Antlerless deer, the whole thing.
In perpetuity, okay.
But antlerless deer only, at least, and we could, again, this plan is, could be changed next year if we have problems, but that's my motion, I have constituents that express their concern.
I just wanna check with George on that. Would you say, George, that we can do it on, on, uh, city property, or we can't restrict their permit?
We can restrict it on property owner control. Because those other tags are privileges of the New York State hunting licenses, you can't restrict it on third-party private property. Do you make the recommendation?
But we can strongly recommend, so I'm good with that.
We can restrict it on city, uh...
Restrict it on city property and strongly recommend it on non-city property, just because I have constituents that were concerned. I have people that addressed me, and I have to speak for them.
Because hunters do have cameras out there, you're around.
And they know what's out there.
They know what's out there.
Okay, so yes is for the change, no is to leave it as it is, and this will be the last part of the discussion, and then we'll go into regular vote. So we call the roll, yes to change it, no to leave it as it is.
Council President Jankowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Costino?
Yes.
Canaly?
Yes.
McInnes?
I care less. I'm tired of this.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Karat?
Yes.
Baykowski?
Yes.
Okay, that change is made. Now, any other discussion on the, uh, motion, or on the original resolution? Okay, call the roll.
Councilmember Canaly?
Yes.
McInnes?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
No.
Karat?
Yes.
Baykowski?
No.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Costino?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Resolution sixty-three, twenty-twenty, Mr. McGinnis, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to amend the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one fire department budget to reflect the receipt of a KIMO Assistant to Firefighter Grant in the amount of sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five cents.
Seconded by, Ms. Briggs. Any concerns or discussion?
Yes.
Christian, work on lower rating for us for the flood insurance. Is any of this gonna be, uh, work done that had our rating reduced again for the flood insurance?
Sure, so, um, just so you're aware, a fire chief has been put in charge, um, a few years ago of the FEMA flood plane management area. And, uh, this year is the recertification year, so we do have a number of FEMA coming into the city or virtually into the city, uh, I believe it's October sixth. And they will be reviewing, um, some of the different activities we do in different city departments to try to keep the rating low. We actually have a mailer for the fifth and sixth ward, so it's being prepared. Um, you'll see a copy of that soon to go out to your residents to remind them about hunters' insurance, flood insurance, other things you can do to protect your home. And we were looking for a presentation in October to city council, because it's been a while, on the flood management plane area. So during the process, FEMA will review what activities we still undertake, like public engagement, um, different activities we do over the creek, um, how we alert landowners on insurances, survey work, and how we encourage people to have flood insurance and give us another rating. Whether it'll be the same or not, we won't know until later in the year, but, um, certainly predicting the presentation we wanted to give in October with the fire chief.
Anything else? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember McInnes?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Karat?
Yes.
Baykowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Costino?
Yes.
Canaly?
Yes.
Resolution sixty-four, twenty-twenty, Mr. Briggs.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to amend the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one fire department budget to reflect the receipt of the FM Global Fire Investigation Equipment Grant in the amount of one thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight dollars and zero cents. How's that coming?
Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Karat?
Yes.
Baykowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Costino?
Yes.
Canaly?
Yes.
McInnes?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Resolution sixty-five, twenty-twenty, Mr. Costino, please.
I move a resolution to amend the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one firefighter budget to reflect the receipt of a bicycle and pedestrian safety grant in the amount of eight hundred dollars.
Seconded, Ms. Briggs. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Costino?
Yes.
Canaly?
Yes.
McInnes?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Karat?
Yes.
Baykowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Resolution sixty-six, twenty-twenty, Ms. Briggs.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to amend the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one fire department to reflect the receipt of a car seat grant in the amount of three thousand, two hundred dollars.
Seconded, Mr. McGinnis. Any questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Karat?
Yes.
Baykowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Costino?
Yes.
Canaly?
Yes.
McInnes?
Yes.
Resolution sixty-seven, twenty-twenty, Mr. Baykowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move a resolution of the city council, the City of Batavia, authorizing the purchase and financing by the issuance of serial bonds of a jet, van, and truck producing the city sanitary system, water system, storm sewers, and highway maintenance operations, and authorizing the city manager or other authorized officer, the city, to take all necessary actions that comes with the purchase and financing.
Seconded by, Mr. Kurias. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Baykowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Costino?
Yes.
Canaly?
Yes.
McInnes?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Karat?
Yes.
Okay, resolution sixty-eight, twenty-twenty, Mr. Canaly.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to amend the twenty-twenty, uh, twenty-twenty-one Police Department budget to reflect the receipt of a police traffic services grant.
Seconded by, Mr. Baykowski. Any questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Canaly?
Yes.
McInnes?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Karat?
Yes.
Baykowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Costino?
Yes.
Okay, motion's in there.